Okay, well, good afternoon. I'll officially call to order the study session of Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors, April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five here in Palm Desert. And prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record of this meeting, it should be reflected in the minutes, that at least a portion of this meeting is being conducted pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five three, in that Director Estrada is in Coachella, California, will be participating by speakerphone. In accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Well, at least for one of them. And should we note the location? It's, I'm guessing it's at somewhere in Coachella, it's probably.
So, yeah, what we should do is Director Estrada is on the line, we would just like him.
We'll ask, we'll ask him that question.
To, to confirm his location, so we can note that officially.
So, um, so Vice President Estrada, could you answer these questions? One, can you hear me well?
Yes.
Um, and were you, there were no proceedings up until now. Uh, do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
Can you tell us your location, please?
My location is five, three, four, six, two Enterprise Way, Coachella, California, nine, two, two, three, six.
Okay, so that, that's Corporate Yard?
Yes.
All right, we know where that is. Have you, have you posted the agenda where you're located?
Yes.
Uh, is your location reasonably accessible to the public, such that any public could be there with you?
Correct.
Uh, and is there anyone there with you now who would like to participate?
No.
Okay, thanks. Well, let us know if that changes, please.
Okay.
We don't have Director Nelson?
Correct, Director Nelson will be joining us a little bit later in the meeting. So, I would just recommend to the chair to do so, but I recommend that we do take a pause when he does and just go through the verification process to make sure we meet those requirements.
Well, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the fire of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Yes, good afternoon, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
And Director Aguilar.
Here.
Thank you. And we'll note.
Okay. Okay, good. So, uh, is there anybody from the public wishing to make comment at this time? Seeing none. Uh, we have one item for our study session. Uh, please note that there will be no action taken as this is only a study session, but our item is the presentation of the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, proposed operating budget and forecast. And Carla Camara, good morning or good afternoon.
Good day.
There we go, sorry about that.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, good afternoon. Um, so today's presentation, we will fly through a couple of the slides that are updates or reiterations from the January first budget study session we provided. But today we are going to give you updated projections for all of the funds on expenses and revenues. And then also a recommendation on some changes for property tax allocations for next fiscal year twenty-six. An overview of the debt service for each one of the funds. And then also go over some individual summaries for each one of the budgets. So this is our fourth budget study session for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. It's noted there, highlighted on the screen. We do have a proposed budget adoption date of June the tenth with a tentative alternative date of June twenty-fourth. Um, at the end of the session, the study session, we'll also recommend that we propose an additional study session, if possible, in May for any state water project changes or, or other things that may happen with that particular fund. And then, of course, the budget year begins on July first of two thousand and twenty-five. We've seen these slides during the last study session, just to reiterate that this isn't done in a bubble. It isn't only done by finance, but all the departments of the district participate in putting together these budgets and projections. And many of your directors are here, or all of them are here today to answer any detailed questions regarding operations that I may not be able to answer for you. Again, um, on the screen here are listed all the different departments, all the different funds, and we'll be going over each one of these today. Oops. Let's go back. Um, our total proposed operating budget is five hundred and thirty-five point seven million dollars for fiscal year twenty-six. You'll see a couple of variances and changes here we'd like to highlight. The debt service has a large decrease because we did pay off the state, the domestic state revolving fund loan of seventeen point five million dollars. And we also have the two thousand and twenty-two A domestic notes of thirty-five point two million dollars, which are due by June first of two thousand and twenty-five this year. And that's the large reduction in the debt service payments that is reflected there of fifty-three point seven million. And then also on the capital improvement budget, you see an increase of twenty-seven point two million. Carrie reviewed these, the capital project during our last study session. Um, the sixty-five point one million on the legal claim contingency, those are accruals for pending litigation. That is the estimated balance at the, close to an estimated balance for the end of this year. We do have some adjustments that we'll be making, but that's a pretty close estimate there. And again, that's for all of the funds. Uh, the last study session, the board asked about these prior period adjustments that were done regarding accounting regulations. So we did want to provide you an answer to those. We had two new accounting regulations which were implemented last fiscal year with the ACFER. That was the audited financial statements for fiscal year ending June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-four. The first one was GASB ninety-six regarding license software cost, and the other one was GASB one hundred regarding the treatment of accounting principles and estimates and corrections. So, basically, we had these projects that were in construction and progress. They weren't fully capitalized, and this new regulation came into place. And we had to take them out of capitalized, um, take them out of a capitalized status and then expense them and then amortize over the depreciation over our life. So it's, it's more of just an accounting regulation, it had nothing to do with cash. It was just the treatment of this being expensed in one fiscal year, even though the cash went out in prior years. Any regularity? Nonetheless. Excuse me, um, total operating expenses, we'll go over these first for all of the funds. We do have a decrease in water purchases. We have a forty percent allocation table, uh, Table A allocation for state water project. Of course, the final allocation is expected in May. This may or may not change, which is why we may require an additional study session prior to budget adoption. And then overall, our salary and benefits are projected to increase by about two point two percent or two point three million dollars overall. We have a four percent cost of living increase projected into the budget. We do budget vacancies at the top level to allow for flexibility during recruitments. And then we also have leave payouts for those that are nearing retirement at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars budgeted. And then for two million dollars to augment staff or temporary labor because of the ongoing ERP implementations for Workday and SpryPoint. And then on the CalPERS liability, the total payment to CalPERS, um, not including the ongoing payroll contributions is seventeen point five million. Two points, sorry, twelve point five million of that is for the annual payment, the lump sum payment that we would be making in July if the interest earnings are, um, pan out well again. And then also a proposed five million dollar contribution to the pension trust, which we will be bringing back to the board in May for approval.
Is that the one fifteen discussion we had?
The new proposed one fifteen trust. Yeah, so we would, um, we're proposing to a five million dollar contribution this year. Uh, we have a seven million dollar budget, but only a five million dollar contribution. And then next year have an additional five million dollar contribution. And so those numbers are incorporated within these budget projections. And then under services and supplies, we do have an increase of about four point four million dollars. A lot of this has to do with one-time costs. These plans are for Mission Springs in the Indiano Sub Basin. Alternative plans are required to be updated every five years. The board adopted those professional services agreements at the board meeting on March eleventh. And a proportionate share of those are paid by CVWD and then other neighboring agencies. But CVWD is the lead agency regarding these updates. On the revenue side, for all of the funds, we do have an increase of five point two million dollars. We have on our property tax allocations for this year, we do have an adjusted update of an additional five percent growth assumed into this year's budget. And then from there, we did an additional three percent increase for fiscal year twenty-six. So we are, do continue to see strong property tax revenues in our area. And then on intergovernmental, we have twenty-one point three million dollars total budgeted. Uh, fourteen million, or the majority of that is from the USBR curtailment revenue under the Canal Fund. And then, um, two point seven million dollars for the Canal underrun revenue for Metropolitan Water District. And the proposed rate increases that we'll be discussing today for domestic is a five percent rate increase. Uh, we did have some adjustments that we made within the domestic fund to keep it at that five percent rate increase. Otherwise, um, we have an alternative rate of ten percent, um, if we, if we don't incorporate those adjustments. And then the sanitation increase is eight point five percent, which is a proposition to eighteen maximum amount allowed. And feel free to stop me if you have any questions.
Carla.
Yes.
On the intergovernmental, uh, it says twenty-one point three. Um, but the bullet points, uh, I think only add up to about seventeen. What's the other stuff?
Other ones are related, um, we'll go over a couple of them within each one of the funds, but they, a lot of them have to do with loan repayment, loan, uh, payments or reimbursements for grants.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Great question. The total operating income. We, what we look at here is just, um, the proportionate, the revenue that is remaining to pay off the debt service. And then also your capital, uh, projects or your pay-go capital projects, and then also to replenish your reserves. We see that the, um, majority of these are positive, minus, except for the Mission Creek. That does have a negative, um, or an operating loss. It's a very minor, it's four hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. So we are using reserves, uh, for that particular fund, but the rest of them are positive. It is important to note, though, that within the sanitation fund, we propose to use about seventeen point six million dollars of reserves. And then within domestic, about four point four million dollars of reserves. This one's an important slide. Um, it's a property tax allocation that we are recommending for next fiscal year. Um, this can be adjusted on an annual basis. It includes both discretionary and non-discretionary property tax revenue. The stormwater is restricted, so it's not discretionary, so we're not recommending an adjustment there. And then five million of the Canal Fund is for ID one area and also recommended to stay. However, we are recommending to reduce the East replenishment, uh, discretionary property tax revenue and allocate, uh, five million dollars of that to the domestic fund in order to keep the domestic rates at five percent. This would be, um, again, one, one time, but when we look forward at the projections, it does include that carryover. So our budget, um, model, you know, doesn't allow for, um, rate or adjustments to property taxes and then reductions again back to the normal, so it carries forward. So it's important to note for the domestic fund, if we don't keep this five million dollars, which we probably likely won't, that the future rate increases within the domestic fund would actually be higher than what is noted in this presentation. As for full disclosure.
Carla, on the, um, so, let me see if I got this right. You're saying this is a one-time thing, but, but you're saying the, what you show here is, is that the domestic keeps the five million for several years?
It's the domestic, it's included within our projections going forward at this point in time within the models, yes. But that doesn't mean that that cannot be adjusted. We would actually be looking at this every year.
Understood, uh, how far is the model going?
It goes to twenty, uh, thirty for the next five years.
Okay, and then when you say that the East replenishment has expenditure savings and excess unassigned reserves due to the curtailment efforts at the facility? Uh, okay, I'm reading it here now, so it's making sense. Energy and water purchase savings, that's, that's the, that's the savings.
Correct. Yes, and the last time, um, they are expected to, to increase after the curtailment ends, which is why we would not recommend keeping that five million dollars, um, within the domestic fund, but rather putting it back in the East. But we do need to keep enough in the East replenishment fund for the debt service, uh, which next year is one point nine million dollars. And we would like to keep at least three million dollars for property tax revenue there. So more than enough to cover the debt service required by the East replenishment fund and to keep that rate at a zero percent as well for next year.
Okay, um, just off the top of your head, the, the energy, um, and water purchase savings against that, uh, operating budget, is that, is that like fifty percent of it, or what would you say that is?
Well.
The cost savings, I'm just, uh, maybe you'll get into it when we get to that specific one?
The, well, the only thing, the, um, I can tell you what they will be in fiscal year twenty-seven and, or actually twenty-eight is when the curtailment ends versus what they are now, only because the attachments start with fiscal year twenty-four, which already included some of the curtailment savings. So for next year's proposed budget for utilities, it's five hundred and sixty thousand dollars versus it will be one point four million in fiscal year twenty-eight. So that's about a million dollars more. And then, um, on the water purchases for next year, it's proposed to be four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and it should be going up to four point two million in fiscal year twenty-eight. About three point eight million more, so about four point eight million total, which is nearing that five million dollars of property tax revenue that we would want to reallocate back into the East replenishment fund to cover those expenses when the curtailment ends in fiscal, by fiscal year twenty-eight.
But the, but the debt, the debt obligation is only a portion of that?
Correct, the debt obligation is, is in addition to that. And the debt obligation for fiscal year twenty-six is one point nine million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll spend a little bit of time on this one, just talking about debt service, and I'll try to answer as many questions here. Each one of the funds also includes a debt service slide. Uh, but this is the one that has all of the data for all of the funds comprehensively allocated, uh, within one slide. So starting off on the domestic, uh, fund, we talked about, we paid off the SRF loan for seventeen point five million. And then we're also refinancing the interim two thousand and twenty-two notes prior to June first of two thousand and twenty-five. And so you'll see there at the top that the fifty-two point seven million dollars, um, is then decreases to zero and then back up slightly on the debt service. That debt service, um, is for the proposed debt issuance in fiscal year twenty-six. That for several projects, we have, um, it's thirty-seven point two million dollars total. We have the Sun City, uh, Phase Two B, Talavera Phase One, a booster station five five one three, and reservoir five five one four proposed within that thirty-seven point two million dollar debt issuance. And again, that's the one, um, that we could wait until maybe the spring of two thousand and twenty-six to issue. Then within Stormwater, we have both our WIFIA and our Series two thousand and twenty-two bonds that are existing. And then we also have a proposed debt issuance there of thirty-seven, thirty-three point seven million dollars. And this one we may delay because we have some strong reserves within Stormwater, and we're really monitoring the progress of these projects. The two projects associated with this, uh, debt issuance would be the North Cathedral City Stormwater Master Plan Phase One. And then the Thousand Palms, um, Channel Improvement, uh, project from Sun, Sun City Shadow Hills Channel to the Coachella Valley Storm Channel. And then also within sanitation, we have, uh, SRS loans, uh, from twenty-seven eighteen and from two thousand and twenty-one for non-potable connections. We also have two pending, uh, SRF loan applications, which are included and anticipated to be approved within the next fiscal year. And then another proposed debt issuance for fifty million dollars within the sanitation fund. The sanitation proposed debt issuance is for Warp Ten Headworks improvements, Warp Seven Aeration improvements, and Warp Ten Filtration Assessment and Repairs. So we're talking about a total debt issuance of about a hundred and twenty point nine million dollars within next fiscal year. Again, we'll be evaluating that as we go forward and as projects continue to progress um, in order to time the issuance of that debt so that we're able to draw down all of the funds within the three-year period after the debt is issued. We don't want to issue it too early, but we also don't want to have a lot of credit rating cost and, um, associated, you know, with those debt issuances as well.
Carla, um, so all of the CIP projects that we discussed in that presentation are included in these numbers?
Yes.
And then when you say, uh, under Stormwater, uh, may be delayed based on need, that's just based on a revenue source?
Correct, yes, on the revenue source, and we do have, uh, strong reserves within Stormwater, and the board may like to use partial reserves and only, and do a smaller debt issuance or postpone the debt issuance altogether, depending on where that reserve balance ends and if we use those reserves for other purposes.
Okay, thanks.
Carla.
Yes, sir.
Um, on the sanitation, are, did we use the forty million for seventeen eighteen, the twelve point seven for twenty twenty-one? Is the twenty-seven million, uh, have we secured that? Or are we still looking to secure that? And then same question for the thirty-three million? And it sounds like we haven't issued the, the bond, uh, for the fifty million. I, I'm trying to get a sense of how much, how much? What's the number of the debt that we still owe?
So at the, for Stormwater, for sanitation specifically, we do have two loan applications. So we haven't, uh, received back those executed applications from the state yet. Uh, we are answering questions and we have been providing the information that they have requested, but those two are still pending final approval from, uh, the State Water Resource Control Board. And if you look at the chart on the right, um, at the, the bottom portion, there was this principal outstanding. For sanitation, we would have ninety-nine point one million dollars outstanding at the end of next fiscal year. Currently, we only have the forty point one million, uh, but that ninety-nine point one includes, um, the new debt issuance. Um, the forty point one does include the current loans minus anything we've paid out already or paid back. And you'll see that it does continue to, to slightly increase, um, there forward.
Okay, and so the ninety-nine is, uh, including the, um, the fifty million?
Yes.
Okay, and then that's assuming that, that we've secured the thirty-three and the twenty-seven?
Correct.
And our intentions right now is that we would proceed, we're, we're going full on with, with, uh, you know, being, being serious about, um, obtaining that twenty-seven million and that thirty-three million?
Yes.
We have projects for that lined up and all that?
Yes, and I'm not sure if, did you want to go over the projects or?
No, no, this is fine, I just, uh, this is good that you put the, pushing me to see the, um, ninety-nine point one and the one oh four. Uh, I think that helps me keep track, thank you.
Yes, it's quite a bit, and you see the outstanding principal kind of fluctuating up and down over the years. They're at the very bottom on the chart. And that's just because of new debt issuance versus when the actual debt service will be paid, when, you know, loans are coming in and out of, of the programs. And then on the Canal one, I'm sorry, I didn't go over that one, but that one includes, um, the USBR, um, loans, irrigation laterals, the mid-canal reservoir and extraordinary projects. So you see again that increase, slight increase year over year as those projects are completed and those loans are drawn down on. And then the East replenishment includes the Oasis, um, and that debt service that I mentioned at the, the previous property tax slide is there noted at the top. Um, third item down, and you see that in one point nine million dollars. And again, we kept three million of that because we know that in fiscal year twenty-eight, that debt service increases to two point nine million dollars. So now we'll dive into, um, each one of the different funds. We'll start with domestics, it's always, um, probably the most cumbersome and the one that we might need to focus a little bit more on today. We have salary and benefits, I have a minor increase of one point nine million dollars. We do have services and supplies, about a one point three million dollar increase. Of course, chemicals continue, um, to reflect an increase in cost. And then also we have professional services that are budgeted at about one point nine million dollars. Uh, the finance department does have proposed cost of service studies included in here for the domestic and replenishment funds. We also have environmental services, nutrient management plan that is required. And your public affairs, state and federal, federal and state lobbyist contract renewal is also up next fiscal year. So those are, um, some of those are one-time cost and then ongoing cost for lobbyists and contract renewal services. Of course, we are seeing also increases within our utilities for both IID and Southern California Edison. And those increases are impacting several of the funds that we'll, uh, go over today.
Could I just ask Carla on that IID increase, it looks like about twenty percent? And that's probably not for the whole year. What is that? I, I was on their website today trying to figure out to, to back that up with some information. I couldn't find anything. How do we know?
I'm going to ask Dan and Oscar or ask her to come up because they track this very closely and do a lot of analysis.
There is scheduled increases, but, um, I think part of the increase from last year is that we underestimated it last year. So the actual was higher than the budget last year. Um, but we went into minute detail with Luisa Arco and others, uh, in our group to make sure that we feel very comfortable with this number, so.
I mean, is it a rate increase or is it just a, a, um, maybe we're just truing up the number?
Uh, there is, there is an increase, but it is, it is overblown as a result of us underestimating it last year.
So it's not a twenty percent rate increase?
Not, it's not a twenty percent rate.
Yeah, and.
Yeah, it's, I think we missed, last year, we, um, we were very efficient in the SCE, uh, area as a result of some of our optimization in our, in our energy billing management system. And I think we just overestimated the, um, the savings last year, which exhaust, I can't say that word, which overdoes the, uh, increase this year. So it's nowhere near twenty percent. It, it's a reconciliation.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just, look, I was just on their website, and it looks like it's actually going to go down in two thousand and twenty-six.
Yeah, there's an EC, well, there's.
Well, and, and is, I don't know what's going on with the energy cost adjustment, it's gone right now.
So believe it or not, um, our billings between October and December went from like nine point eight up to fifteen point something, and then they're coming back down, they're getting rid of the ECA.
Yeah, because when they did the rate increase at the beginning of the year, it included the ECA and then they got rid of it.
Exactly, so.
So it was a big jump and then now it's not, it's depending on when you look at it, it's not.
Every month, which was very unusual, and we, we are very, we know that it's stabilized now, we feel very confident with it.
Is it gone? Did somebody, who knows these things?
It's gone.
It's gone, it's gone right now, is it coming back? I don't know.
I don't think it's coming back, it's gone, that's my understanding.
I think it's gone forever, they're going to deplete the fund and it's gone.
That's my understanding, so.
That's what, that's my understanding too, I hope that's.
But they made a mistake and it went, it went from nine to sixteen something over three months, and then they get rid of it all. So we've, we've gone through that analysis and we feel very confident in these numbers.
Yeah, great question, lots of volatility there is.
Yeah, well, I think it's, there was a lot of volatility in the rate, but I think that's.
Hopefully subsided.
Your intent is that, in the past, yeah.
We'll see next year's and what happens there.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, on the revenue for the domestic fund, we are seeing, uh, a proposed increase of about eleven point one million. Again, that does include a proposed rate increase of five percent. We did revise the consumption based on our discussion during our last meeting. We are, this year's consumption will end at about forty million. We are, this year's consumption will end at about forty million uh C C F and so we've adjusted up the consumption for next year to um, thirty eight point five million. Kind of in the middle, not all the way up to forty and I'll show you why when we get to slide sixteen and we start looking at the volatility in the um consumption within the domestic fund. But we do feel comfortable with um doing a minor adjustment there and that minor adjustment um also helps to minimize the rate increase for next fiscal year. And on services and charges, we um are including uh the fixed uh portion again with the five percent rate increase. And again, the property tax allocation transfer from the east replenishment fund that we are recommending as well, which is also increasing the revenue within the domestic fund. Again, subject to board confirmation for the property tax allocation. And then um, on the non-operating revenue, again, we do include also three point nine million dollars of debt service. Revenue from the west replenishment fund for the mid-valley pipeline interfund loan. You see the principal and the interest repayments there. The original balance of this loan was sixty point three million dollars. The current balance is forty three point six million. And um at the end, that will be at the end of this fiscal year and we've, so we've paid about sixteen point seven million dollars of that loan. There's thirteen years remaining and um it's scheduled again to be paid off in twenty thirty eight. The current interest rate is four point three percent on that loan.
So that, that's an internal?
An internal fund loan, yes. But it does help with our debt service coverage ratios and then also to assist with paygo funding for capital projects. And then for the debt service coverage ratio within the domestic fund itself, we have to meet the parity debt service test to maintain compliance with um compliant, maintain current compliance and then also for future debt that we are anticipating to issue. Uh, paying off the S R F loan did allow us to get rid of the M A Ts coverage, the maximum annual debt service coverage and only leave us with the uh debt service coverage of one point two five percent of the annual debt service payments. We are anticipating to again refinance those interim uh twenty twenty two notes uh by June this year before June first of twenty twenty five. And then we're going to capitalize um the interest so there's not, no debt service payment that is going to be required next fiscal year twenty twenty six for that refinance. So that's why you see no debt coverage um minimums there for twenty year, fiscal year twenty six. Um, of course, we also have um a proposed debt issuance and that debt issuance would then give us a new um debt service requirement depending on how that debt is structured. If the debt is structured to be issued in late spring of twenty twenty six, the first debt service payment may not occur until the subsequent fiscal year and fiscal year twenty seven, which is why you don't see any debt service coverage ratio here for that new proposed debt issuance in fiscal year twenty six within the domestic fund. And as a reminder, that proposed debt issuance does not include chromium six. So that is only for again the Sun City, Talavera Booster Station and a reservoir project. Um, so future debt service coverage ratios, we're also really taking a look at that and making sure that our rates are set appropriately so that we don't have big future spikes and rate recommendations when we do have to issue uh debt that we know or for the chromium six treatment.
So, so the principal reason for the twenty six rate at ten percent is? Debt, additional debt?
Well, we're recommending a five percent. Um, you do have capacity to go up to twenty six percent, I believe, according to the proposition to eighteen. Notice we currently have in place, a ten percent rate increase allows you to have lower rate increases in the future if you want to do a higher rate increase this year. Um, but we need at least a five percent rate increase to avoid um, I'll have a slide coming up just going into the negatives, having net operating income and those factors, yeah. It also allows us to have really strong credit ratings as we go into this debt issuance, knowing that we do have um about twelve point two million dollars available for debt service um as we issue that debt. And that way we can structure the debt appropriately and hopefully get better ratings and better uh interest rate as well.
Carla, um, the, the slide that that we're looking at right now, this is saying that we had a five percent increase already in twenty five?
Yes, we did.
Okay, and and so the recommendation is that we have another one?
Correct.
Another five percent and then related to the chromium six uh bond issuance and debt? Is the proposal that that we would um that the rate increases that we're talking about now, that this five percent or or what your show here is a ten percent for twenty twenty six? That that's taking into account uh chromium six or would we approve uh a two eighteen? And then, and then do another one? What, how do we roll in the chromium six into into this?
These uh projections do not include any chromium six cost. Um, there's a couple of ways we could do that. We could, we do have a domestic cost of service study which we are proposing what we have to do before the spring of twenty twenty six and hopefully by then we will have costs associated with chromium six. If we wanted to incorporate those costs in the rates, we could do that at that time within that cost of service study. Um, the other is to have a separate line item within the bill to cover the debt associated with the chromium six treatment. And one of the reasons to do that is because of the volatility that you're seeing here on the consumption. When we have the wetter years, we have very low consumption that you see there in fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. Um, those hotter years such as this year and fiscal year twenty two, you have that higher consumption. Because our volumetric, our consumption is seventy six percent of our total rate revenue, it's really hard to issue debt to such a large capacity and only rely on those rates. Um, you would potentially have some volatility in your rate increases going forward in order to meet that debt service uh requirement and that could also um maybe not give us some favorable favorable credit rating and debt issuance for the chromium six. So a couple of ways to tackle that, those are two that I can think of off the top of my head. Of course, there's always additional discretionary property tax revenue you can allocate from other funds um such as stormwater or sanitation. Depending on the projects um and future costs associated with that. But you're really looking at a thirty-year um repayment for any debt regarding chromium six, so we'd have to do a lot of long-term analysis once we determine what that final cost is. Initially, last year, the cost was projected to be five hundred and ten million dollars for chromium six, but I, my understanding is that that may be adjusted, hopefully down um and that we'll be discussing um potential um plan of action for for that treatment.
And then uh, so the current, the current two weeks, this, the recommended increase for um next, for this next fiscal year, the five percent and then the ten percent, is that, is that our, is that part of our, our two eighteen schedule now?
The current two eighteen expires this July first of twenty twenty five. So future rate increases would need to be justified with a new cost of service study prior to next year's budget.
That includes the five percent for next year or starting in twenty twenty six?
Uh, in twenty, the five percent for twenty twenty six is below your prop two eighteen maximum level. Right now, you could go up to twenty six percent within the current prop two eighteen notice.
Okay, but but anything that we do in
Anything you
Six needs a new two eighteen notice?
No, anything you do after twenty twenty six would require a new eight, two eighteen notice. So even the um alternative rate recommendation of ten percent is below your twenty six percent total capacity within your current prop two eighteen notice.
I, I see what you're, okay, we, we have one, we have one year left.
Yes, this, this budget cycle.
Okay, so um, none of what we're, none of what we're talking right now um is contemplating chromium six which, which uh when, when we do uh have to do a new, a, a new uh cost of service two eighteen, then, then all of that will get baked in for twenty twenty seven?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So we did go over this one slightly and again, this is why we're recommending uh kind of a midpoint at thirty eight point five uh million dollars for the consumption versus going all the way up to the forty uh million C C F that we are projecting to end this year. This year's been really hot, really dry. Um, we don't know what next year will bring us, but again, you see that those wet years really lowered the consumption overall. And the dotted line for the average, that's our ten-year average, so we would still anticipate uh revenues or um consumption above that ten-year average going forward. But again, just highlighting the volatility here within our uh volumetric revenues.
And Mr. President, I just want to note that Director Nelson did join us, so he is on the line.
Yeah.
Now.
Do we need to?
No, just let's go.
I don't think so. We already have our
We're fine. We have our quorum.
One of the things that we could consider uh with the next cost of service study is taking a look at reducing the volatility in the rate by moving uh more of the revenue to the fixed charge and less to the volumetric charge, so closer to seventy thirty instead of twenty, seventy six, twenty four. That way we don't become quite susceptible to changes in the hydro.
Yes, and if you're doing the math, um, on that bullet point number one, one million C C F is about one point nine million. And again, we're going from forty to um the thirty eight point five and so you'll see that there's the equivalent kind of uh rate reduction or revenue reduction there. Let's talk a little bit more about domestic fund and our operating income. Again, uh, the operating income overall, we want to keep that positive because it's required for debt service coverage and to meet our reserve targets and to potentially offset paygo funding um and capital needs. So again, we uh did want to provide a recommended rate increase of five percent on alternative of ten and then the board always likes to see no rate increase and what those impacts are. The no rate increase impact does um give a loss um as soon as next fiscal year and it starts to deplete uh reserves pretty quickly thereafter. So that is definitely not a recommendation uh for staff, even though next fiscal year you do see it positive, but you see it dip very, very quickly thereafter. Again, you have that compounding effect if you have a minor rate increase now and it pushes forward into the future fiscal years. Um, to highlight with uh Director, Vice President Estrada mentioned those future rate recommendations for any uh rate increases past fiscal, this fiscal year twenty six, twenty seven and beyond would need to be affirmed with a prop two eighteen notice. But the reason we included them here is just to show the volatility. If we had no rate increase this year, what those future projected rate increases could look like based on our current um assumptions. And again, this also includes uh that property tax revenue left in domestic and again, we know that that will not occur and so these rate increases will be even higher in future fiscal years.
That's a fair point, but we could not do a rate increase this year. It would just make the future increases bigger.
Bigger, yes, and um potentially give pause or more questions for rated agencies as we do issue both the chromium six and um eh the debt issuance within the domestic fund. And when we're talking about a rate increase of five percent, we're really talking about a dollar eighty-two per month um for, within the residential customers.
Carla, you mentioned
Earlier
How are the reserves um being used to subsidize?
Percent?
There is a portion of reserves, um, use of restricted reserves is four point four million dollars uh for next fiscal year for um the, for capital.
Okay, but that, that still leaves our reserves in healthy condition.
It still leaves us in the domestic fund with about forty eight point eight million dollars of reserves as you um, you can see here at the, I wish I had a pointer. It's on the, the graph, the first um item there under fiscal year twenty six. The thirty eight uh point eight one, under the recommended five percent rate increase.
Thank you.
So, and then the reserve target is noted there towards uh the bottom under, what, one, two, three, four, the fifth line under the reserves. And so you see the reserve target slightly increasing because expenses increase year over year. And again, that recommended rates going forward um allow us to by fiscal year twenty thirty uh reach the reserve target. So you'll see that the domestic fund, even with the recommended rate increases of five percent, ten percent, ten percent, twelve and event, and then fourteen, stays below the reserve target all the way until fiscal year twenty thirty. So what I'm looking at is the first line item under recommended five percent and under reserves and then the rate increase recommended five percent. And I mentioned this briefly, we did stay with a twenty uh C C F water budget within the uh domestic residential accounts, even though in twenty twenty five, we are anticipating that that will increase. So twenty twenty two, it was about twenty uh C C F, twenty three eighteen, twenty four eighteen. Again, those were the wetter years, less consumption. Twenty five may increase back up to twenty twenty one pers- uh twenty one C C F and we'll bring that, those data points once we have them. Uh, but again, the five percent recommended rate increase is about a dollar eighty-two increase per month. And if we wanted to do the ten percent, that's three dollars and eighty-four cents um per month. And the five percent recommended rate increase is really right in the middle of your, almost nearing your July first twenty twenty three prop two eighteen number. So we're about two years behind um that prop two eighteen notice within the domestic fund with the recommended five percent rate increase. So we've really tried to, you know, minimize those rate increases over time, but again, the prop two eighteen notice does allow you to go up to twenty six percent.
So Carla, I've mentioned this before uh regarding the tiered rates, that um there's been a lot of litigation around the structured tiered rates and different decisions from the courts. So is that being looked at when we try to validate these tiered rates?
We would take a look at that again during our next cost of service study and definitely work with legal because we do have um a domestic pending litigation item as well.
Okay.
Yes. But for now, we're not proposing to change um the structure of our rates within the domestic fund. And again, here's the uh domestic rate comparison. Um, we like to see this against other water agencies. This is updated as of this month. I will say that I have heard several of these other water agencies um propose rate increases somewhere in the tune of five to seven percent, even nine percent. Um, and so those are becoming forth, you know, with their individual agencies as well. But this does include um a comparison based on current rates with those other agencies and our recommended five percent rate increase within the domestic fund. So even um in comparison without those other water agencies increasing their rates, our rate would continue to be lower based on their current rates that are adopted. Before I go into canal, any questions on domestic?
If I can get my little light to turn green. Um, do you know which of these agencies also implements tiered rates? I think, I'm pretty sure Eastern does, Desert does not. I don't think Mission Springs does.
Mioma does, Indio Water, um, don't think Coachella does. I think they're on a flat.
Coachella has a two uh, two tier. Uh, basically, the first tier is from one, from zero to forty-one consumptions is tier one and that's like a dollar fifty and then from forty-one to infinity is tier two and that's a dollar sixty-five.
But most do not. I think it's probably an easier way to say that.
Maybe half and half. I'm hearing Coachella, Indio, um, Mioma, Eastern.
Okay.
About half.
Half and half.
I think we all watch each other's rates and rate studies. Um, so let's go ahead and move on to canal. So for canal, we have a um total operating expense increase of about two point six million dollars. A portion of that is for salary and benefits. Uh, water purchases reflect an eight point nine percent increase for a five thousand dollar, five thousand acre feed of additional Q S A water, which is approximately equates to one million dollars overall with the budget. And then supplies and services reflect a nine point one And then supplies and services reflect a nine point one percent increase or um and that's because of the following program that is new and it is offset with uh revenues uh that we'll be getting back from from that program. But we do need to also expense of that, that the expenses going out to pay for those following programs. So this is the major changes on expenses for your Canal Fund. And then uh for the revenue side on the Canal Fund, we do have intergovernmental revenues, which is a big portion of um the overall revenues within Canal. Again, fourteen million is for curtailment revenues uh at the Tommy's A Levy facility. Uh, two point seven million is for under run revenue for Metropolitan Water District. Uh, one point eight million for I I D power proceeds. Again, the following program has a revenue offset for the expense I just mentioned. And then also um six hundred thousand or point six million for the Canal, Coachella Canal lining project reimbursement revenue. And then we also have property tax revenue that is allocated here. Again, of this property tax revenue, five million is from I D one which is restricted and about nine point nine million is discretionary property tax revenue allocated to the Canal Fund. And then you see some strong investment income earnings there because we have not been utilizing any of the curtailment revenue and those reserves are strong. And um therefore, based on the reserve balance, that eh in the investment income earned within the fund would continue to be strong as well. Um, the current reserve balance within the Canal Fund at the end of this fiscal year is suppo- is expected to be about seventy three point six million dollars. For debt coverage ratios within the Canal Fund, uh we do have a parity test with a um maximum annual, sorry, minimum debt service coverage of one point two five percent. So we are um projected to have a very strong capacity here. You see the debt service coverage ratio is way above that one point two five percent ratio that is required. Um, the U S B R debt will increase uh with the loans as they're fully drawn down. Um, and so that debt service coverage ratio at the bottom on the on the right chart towards second to the bottom line uh will continue to increase over time as those loans are drawn down. But very strong coverage here. Uh for consumption within the Canal Fund, um we do have lower sales uh due to the ongoing curtailment projected. And then you'll see an increase there on the chart to the right as that curtailment begins to end. And then you also see an increase in the Oasis sales over the forecasted period as the customers continue to switch to Canal water instead of groundwater pumping. And then in fiscal year twenty six, you see a final Q S A delivery increase to the hundred and three uh uh acre feet, thousand acre feet. On your operating income, again, we do not have a rate increase proposed within the Canal Fund. We, the rate increases or the rates that are set now and proposed to stay are from twenty twenty one for the class one and class two. Um, the Quaga and gate charges and outside improvement district one surcharges are if as of effective July first of twenty twenty four. And those are within the current Prop two eighteen um issuance or a notice within the Canal Fund. And you see the operating income decreasing because the curtailment revenue goes away. Uh and then we're not proposing a rate increase going forward. Again, that would depend if you um that would also mean that you would use the curtailment revenue going forward to avoid rate increases. If there, if the curtailment revenue is not used, then there would be projected rate increases going forward. And again, um we would be doing a new cost of service study for Canal um in order to justify or or contemplate what those rate increases would be without using the curtailment revenue. So you see here on this slide, the reserve target or the recommended rates again are zero percent across the board through fiscal year twenty thirty. And then um the reserves stay above target even with those uh zero percent rate increases. But again, the curtailment revenue begins to be utilized to avoid those rate increases.
On your prior slide, I noticed so the curtailment revenue goes away, but we see further drops in twenty nine and thirty for revenue. What would that be?
It's your expenses increasing. And so this is your operating income. It's your revenue minus your expenses.
No increase in the in spend, okay. Yeah, it's not revenue.
Yeah. So again, something we'll monitor um the current Prop two eighteen notice expires um July first of twenty twenty five. Uh, we are working on a potential new cost of service study that would then extend that out to fiscal year twenty thirty. Any questions on Canal? Sanitation's next. So operating expenses for sanitation are expected to decrease by seven hundred twenty seven thousand eight hundred fifty seven dollars uh or one and a half percent. Salary and benefits are slightly decreasing uh due to capitalized labor for C I P costs. And then services and supplies, we do have an increase there of um seven point five, or sorry, a decrease there uh of seven point five percent related to work orders based on anticipated internal needs for fiscal year twenty six. So internal labor being used for work orders. And then also a decrease in equipment usage. And um all of the, those two decreases are offset by increases again to those utility costs.
Carla, I um do not fully understand. Sorry. The the capitalized labor allocation. I mean, when you see a benefits and salaries reduction, which is compensated for about the capitalized labor charge, how's that, how does that work?
This is associated with the internal labor, like mostly for engineering or operations that assist with the sanitation capital improvement projects. And so their labor would be capitalized uh within the fund. Um, and so your overall, your salary and benefits not associated with C I P's um projects is decreasing.
So those charges get charged to a project?
To a project, correct. Yeah. So you see the increase in capitalized labor and the decrease in the salary and benefits. Then on the revenue side for sanitation, we see about a five point nine million dollar increase. Again, that's with a proposed rate increase of eight point five percent based on the Prop two eighteen maximum rates. Current residential um customers pay about thirty one, thirty one dollars and twenty one cents. The proposed rates are thirty three dollars and eighty seven cents, which is a two dollar and sixty six cent per month increase uh with that eight and a half percent rate increase that is proposed. And then again, the property tax revenue, no changes in the percentage allocation, but we do have a three percent growth factor factored into next fiscal year. So you have an increase there as well. And we'll be going over the rate increases on slide thirty two again as a comparison. For the debt service coverage within sanitation, we have to meet two uh debt service requirements here because of the um S R F loans. They have both a um minimum debt coverage ratio of two point five percent and that maximum annual debt service coverage. If you recall, this is what we're trying to avoid within the domestic fund, which is why we paid off the S R F loan. We are not able to pay off the S R F loan, even though we have strong reserves within sanitation because the state has already pledged these revenues for their future debt. And so we're kind of stuck, for lack of a better word, uh to making sure that we have rates set to pay or to cover both debt service coverage requirements, both the Mads and the um minimum debt coverage ratio of the two point uh one percent. So again, you see that in green on the chart, both still remain strong uh which is why we continue to recommend the uh proposed rate increase according to the Prop two eighteen notice. The, there's also a future debt issuance. Again, um a fifty million dollars expected uh within this fund and that debt coverage that you see there right above the first green line is um like is is going to be one point five million dollars in twenty six. But that will increase to approximately almost five million, four point nine million next fiscal year in twenty seven. So you'll start to see a big increase there and then that debt coverage ratio will decrease um depending on what that rate increases for next year as well, for fiscal year twenty seven. And then the last bullet point uh notes that those S R F draws, we also have to have strong reserves within the sanitation fund because those are on a reimbursement basis. Some of those agreements take a while to execute. And so um we need to be able to have strong reserves to fund those as pay go funded projects until those reimbursements are rece- received for the S R F uh loans. And then our operating income, again, this is revenue um over our expenses. We still have a um recommended eight and a half percent rate increase. We did note the no rate increase and what that does, it still gives us strong um operating income because we have had rate increases in previous years. And then the no rate increase is also noted here. And you see with the no rate increase, the operating income begins to um dwindle or reduce over the years. And then um you'll see here that there is no rate increase after fiscal year twenty six and that again is because of the Prop two eighteen um limits and they do expire July first of twenty six. So we could potentially still have another rate increase next year, but at this point, since reserves are pretty strong, uh we did not incorporate a rate increase into next fiscal year. But we'll take a look at that and we'll see what the reserve balances are when we start projecting next year's budget and that may be adjusted. Uh but we do have capacity to have one more rate increase in fiscal year twenty seven according to the Prop two eighteen notice.
Of eight and a half, uh what would, what would that one be?
I did not do the math, I'm sorry. Um, but it, the effective or the proposed rate for July first of twenty five this year is um for the monthly account is one a dollar ninety one and then the new rate for twenty six would be two dollars and seven cents. So minor increase. And then the monthly surcharge would go from thirty one ninety six to thirty four sixty eight. It's uh, it looks like about another eight percent.
Yeah, probably is. That's the way consultants do these things.
And then uh when we take a look at the actual reserves within the sanitation fund, again, um this incorporates all three scenarios, the recommended rate increase, no rate increase, and then um the reserve target. So you note there on the reserves, the reserve target for next year is twenty two point eighty eight million dollars. And under the recommended rates, we recognize that the reserves would end at about seventy three point eight two million. Um, there are other uh potential uses for um for this and there there are very large projects within the sanitation fund as well. So um definitely still recommend that eight and a half percent rate increase within sanitation to allow you the flexibility to determine if you want to have a debt issuance in the future or do pay go funding for projects. And this is our rate comparison within the sanitation fund uh with other agencies and it includes that eight and a half percent rate increase. We did call out the city of Palm Springs and why it is a little bit lower there. We discussed this during our last budget study session last year and just thought it was important to remember that. Uh, I am not sure if any of these agencies are contemplating a rate increase. I have not looked into that. But these are the rates for other agencies as of this month as well, so of um April eighth of twenty five.
So we don't know the, what D W A's charging to do the collection?
We do not have a desert water agency comparison here.
And if there, eh you would just add that to the city of Palm Springs, twenty bucks.
I I do not know the answer to that, but we will.
Neither do I.
Can get that for you if you'd like. Any questions on the sanitation fund before we? Questions, comments?
No, I mean, I'll I'll make a comment on it that you know, I'm assuming these other places are doing, at least some of them are doing a lot of recycling. I mean, San Diego's got to be doing a lot of recycling. I mean, that that's driving up our costs and I imagine that's responsible for these higher costs. That's all I have. I think we said that last year too.
The stormwater fund, how am I doing on time? Two forty, okay. But my voice is keeping up, that's good. Um, under operating expenses, we do see an increase of seven hundred fifty thousand nine hundred and seventy one. Um, and I added these numbers because sometimes we see a five point nine percent increase and like, well, what does that quantify that? What does that mean? Uh, we have an increase in salary and benefits and then also an increase in services and supplies. Um, they, this is one where we have additional costs allocated for equipment and then um minor increase for professional services costs that are allocated within the stormwater fund. Not a lot of movement here. And then on the revenue side, we have an increase of about four point eight million dollars. We have a property tax adjustment, again, the three percent. And then because reserves are strong, we see a strong investment income revenue and increasing um increase there because of that reserve balance. If that reserve balance were to change or reduce for any reason, then of course that operating or that investment income would be reduced as well. And then the reserves within this fund are anticipated to end at about one hundred fifty point four million dollars at the end of this fiscal year. We'll see that in an upcoming slide here. Um, this particular fund, the stormwater fund uh is required to meet again that debt service coverage ratio of one point two five percent. Um, again, you see that in green, we have a strong coverage there above that minimum required threshold. You will begin to see a debt service expense increase starting in fiscal year twenty seven because of the proposed future debt issuance of thirty three point seven million dollars that's expected within the stormwater fund. And again, those are for projects in North Cathedral City and um Thousand Palms um control and flood control improvements. And then as a reminder, that last bullet point, it's always important to remember that uh the implementation of the stormwater master plan did estimate a one point two five billion dollar expense in uh calendar year twenty fifteen. So those expenses I'm sure have increased since then. Um, and I'm not sure when a new master plan is proposed, but just as a reminder, we have very large future expenses within the stormwater fund. Sorry, we did not include a reserve slide on here. But any questions regarding stormwater? Before we go on to each each one of, we have the three replenishment funds next and then we'll end with state water projects. So these uh next few ones will go pretty quickly. Uh, overall, we do not have any rate increases proposed with any of the replenishment funds, uh West, East or Mission. Uh, within the West replenishment fund, we see an increase of two million dollars. Uh, we have a water purchase increases mostly due to non-state water project tax agreements with Metropolitan Water District for some allocations there, percentage of those costs, uh minor salary and benefit increases and then uh professional services uh regarding those plans that need to be updated every five years. So those are one time additional expenses for this next fiscal year twenty six. And then again, this is also the fund that pays uh domestic for that Mid Valley Pipeline Interfund loan. And so that expense is included within the West replenishment fund. On the revenue side for the West replenishment fund, we do have replenishment charges that pretty flat uh for next fiscal year. We have no proposed rate increases. The current rate is a hundred and sixty five dollars and thirty seven cents per acre foot. And that rate is from twenty twenty one. So no rate increase since twenty twenty one and no rate increase proposed for this next fiscal year. Um, the non potable water sales um are estimated about two twenty six thousand five hundred acre feet. And then again, the property tax revenue is increased by three percent. And on the property tax revenue, if you look at the chart on the right, you see that there is actually a minor decrease when you're comparing it to this year's budget. And that's because the fiscal year twenty four uh ended slightly lower and then we ca- caught up in twenty five and and now moving, kind of pushing those projections forward to twenty six. So just something I caught and was asking about myself, like, that looks weird. So, just something I caught and was asking about myself, like, that looks weird. Then within the West replenishment fund, um we do have reserves ending balance um at the end of sorry, um this fiscal year at thirteen, thirteen point four million. The target is eight point nine million, so um definitely have strong reserves above the target level, which is one the ma- one of the major reasons why we're not requesting a rate increase this year. We also don't have a, a bunch of capital improvement projects within this fund. So again, you see the operating income uh there at the bottom right of the chart. And um on the production levels there, you'll see the ten-year average and what our projections are kind of aligned with that ten-year average going forward. So again, you see that increase this year because of the dry wet, the dry year uh decreases in previous years because of the wet years. For the Mission Creek uh replenishment fund, we have an increase of expenses of four hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and twenty seven dollars mostly due to those non-reoccurring expenses related to the Mission Creek area benefit study that I mentioned was due every five years. And then a minor increase to salary and benefits. And then the revenue um two point six percent increase or eighteen thousand dollars. And again, no proposed rate increase. The current rate is a hundred and thirty five dollars and fifty two cents per acre foot and that rate is, has been in place since two thousand and seventeen. No rate increase there. Um on this particular fund, we do see that the projected ending balance for reserves is two point eight million dollars at the end of this year. Our target is three hundred and sixty seven thousand. You see that we have an operating loss, which means that we're using part of that reserve balance um and drawing down on those reserves to get closer to that target level within the Mission Creek replenishment fund. On the East replenishment fund, we have an operating income increase of about one point one million dollars. Um some increases there, or sorry, decreases within salary and benefits um due to the allocation of payroll, some minor changes there and then services supply, services and supplies has a forty seven point three million dollars, sorry, forty seven point three percent increase. Again, those are for those non-reoccurring expenses with the Indio Sub Basin and other allocated cost. And again, you also have increases here for your utilities um anticipated within the East replenishment fund. Uh on the operating revenue, again, no proposed rate increases. The current rate is seventy two dollars and twenty seven cents per acre foot and that rate is from twenty twenty one with no rate increase anticipated for, or projected for this next year. Additional oasis connections will continue um to increase and are expected to reduce uh the, the revenue within the East replenishment fund in the future. And then again, the property tax adjustment that we are proposing for next fiscal year would reduce the property taxes by five million dollars within the East, East replenishment fund and move that to the domestic water fund. So you see that reduction there and again, that would be revisited every year, but for next year, we are um we are recommending that that occurs that we can keep the domestic rate at that five percent and still meet strong debt coverage ratio and, and reserves and um the East replenishment fund, if you recall, does not have the expenses related to water purchases and utilities because of the current, current curtailment.
Is that what allows us to keep the rate at five percent?
Yes. The um the East replenishment fund, uh production numbers are noted here. Um we, we see the average there slightly higher because the consumption in previous years was, was greater. And so that average still remains high. That's a ten-year average uh that is on that dotted line there. And again, the projected ending balance for reserves here is about eighteen point four million. The target is five point four. So strong reserves, no rate increases recommended and even without a rate increase, we would have operating income of about five point eight or five point nine million dollars next year. Then the East replenish, East replenishment fund uh requires a parity debt service test. Uh the one point two five percent debt service coverage ratio, again in green there highlighted, uh strong reserve strong debt service coverage uh going into next fiscal year even without a rate increase. However, the debt service expense will continue to increase in future years uh due to the, the structure of the actual debt that's associated with the East replenishment. When that debt was issued, there was interest only payments through twenty twenty six. And then principal repayments would start in twenty, in August first of twenty twenty seven. So as those principal payments increase and we also have to pay the, the interest and that debt service expense will increase over time. And hence the debt service coverage ratio would begin to decline, uh which may, again, we want to replenish the property tax revenue after likely in twenty seven and then potential rate increases within this fund depending on curtailment and many other factors at that point in time. So our last fund, last but not least, uh state water project, we do have a decrease in um expenses here mostly related to a reduction in uh Table A water allocation currently set at forty percent, as we all know. That may change and if it does, we will bring forward revised uh projections in May uh or early June, depending on the board's flexibility to have an additional study session. And then um going forward for future years, we, we incorporated a fifty percent allocation, which is I don't know if you could say now it's been the average, but um, but that, that's what the district has used in past years um for future rating, future projections. And then as far as the actual um rate within the state water project, we do currently have it at eleven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation. We need some greater clarity regarding long-term liabilities for major projects such as the Delta Conveyance and Sites Project and any other expenses that the district may approve and incur prior to June thirtieth of twenty twenty five prior to this fiscal year ending. So depending on that additional information that is received within, let's say, the next thirty days, then we would bring forth a firm proposed rate for the state water project. Currently, you see that the property taxes on that chart on the right would be reduced because um we have very strong reserves within the state water project. And so unless we have a major expense going out, we may uh recommend a rate reduction within the state water project.
To ten? Is that the contemplated number, ten?
Um, I don't remember, do you remember what the, is it ten? Yes, it is ten. Thank you, good question. Minor decrease. Um that actually concludes our presentation for today. So our, again, we may or may not want a study session in May to tighten up some of these projections. You know, follow up with any feedback you might have regarding today's presentation. Um the budget, again, we'd like to adopt it June tenth. We do have the June twenty fourth as an alternative um date for adoption. And then there's um a couple of things we do wanna affirm and make sure that we incorporate is the property tax allocation move from the East Iraq to the domestic fund. And then we also have um a final quotes pending for our insurance policies. We usually receive those in May. And so we're working really closely with risk management. Last year, I remember we had to do a budget adjustment. The meeting after the budget was adopted because those rates came in about a million dollars over. And so we'd like to be able to incorporate those final numbers within our projections if possible. And then um, of course, we're always monitoring all the tariffs. We didn't talk about that today, but there seems to be a ton of volatility there and we could probably spend an hour talking about that and how that could potentially impact our operations, but at this point in time, we have not incorporated any excessive volatility associated with tariffs and expenses or any of that, but definitely something we would monitor. We are receiving notices from our vendors um indicating potential increases between two and twenty five percent because of these tariffs and so um all the departments, you know, we're, we're just all monitoring it really closely and likely would be bringing forth adjustments or any updates with our quarterly budget updates um going forward in next fiscal year. And then of course, as I mentioned, the final allocation for the state water project Table A water. We'd also want to incorporate that into our final budget projections. So with that, I'll happy to answer any other questions. I can, I can.
Thank you, first of all. So what is the current schedule, anticipated schedule for, for debt issuance, for bonds?
So we, we have the three funds. We have the ones within domestic. The domestic, we're anticipating to issue in the spring of twenty six because Sun City and Talavera are proposed to be bid out over the summer. So we would have some firm numbers there for potential um debt issuance related to um those two projects. The stormwater, that's one where we said we'd pause and we take a look and see how those projects are progressing. Those are the North Cathedral City and the Thousand Palms project, so we did incorporate it as a debt issuance still in next fiscal year, but it, it may be pushed to the following year or even be reduced because of the strong reserves we have uh within stormwater fund. And then for the sanitation, same thing, really monitoring those C I P projects and progress and working closely with engineering. We do have the debt issuance scheduled within um next fiscal year twenty six, but it may be twenty seven at this point.
Yeah, I think the premise that you went on with the transfer and all that, I think that all makes sense. Be interesting to see what the board does. I mean, I, I think that there's a, a little window here for the board to go with a no rate increase on domestic, I mean, for one year. It's, it's interesting because of the, we always see these uh conservative projections, but you know, you have that little, that little bug in there that keeps that transfer in for the future years which is anything but conservative. It's kind of the opposite. And uh, so that's, I don't know, that uh that could be another five percent. So instead of eleven for that next year, it would be sixteen.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I really did wanna highlight that um and it's, it's hard to depict that within the projections and then to lower that and to reallocate it and that really is the board's discretion from year to year, but it really is a rec- one-time recommendation for next year to try to keep the rate at five percent. Just recognizing that overall in the economy, we're seeing a lot of volatility. And we are recommending an eight and a half percent rate increase within sanitation. So just trying to give the board as much flexibility as possible to keep the domestic rate increase low, but yet still reflective of, we know future expenses are increasing overall within that fund.
Right. Thank you. That's it. Is it just us? Oh, they're still on, okay. Okay, anything else from those participating remotely?
Yeah, John, we're still on uh listening very intently. Thank you. I, I, I guess my only comment, uh, uh, and I get the, the moving of the five million and so forth and, and you know, that looks like good management, um you know, uh at this time is, you know, looking very closely at that idea of, you know, potentially having an ability to uh reduce those property taxes on the state water project. I mean, I, I, in, you know, that, that conservative in nature and me, John, uh at the end of the day, you know, has me seeing, looking out there at the Sites Reservoir Project, um the Delta Conveyance Project, um both uh to provide more certainty to our long-term water sustainability and supplies. And then uh kind of a current situation with, you know, potentially having access to uh some ear- early pre-delivered funds of an existing contract that provides certainty in the long run, so I guess I'm, I'm just being cautious about that notion about you know, um having that being a done deal is reducing from eleven to ten on that state water project. So just a little unsure how, how we should go there, but that's kind of my thinking.
Yeah, those are excellent comments. Thank you.
And then for me, uh, yeah, a lot, a lot going on here and a lot of uh different ways to uh shift property taxes, uh make use of the curtailment dollars. I mean, there's just, there's just a lot of levers and, and they all have um consequences uh in the short run and in the long run. And so I think we need to come to an agreement uh sooner than later on what the expectations are for some of those dollars so that uh we can feel like we're all on the same page um as much as possible on how we're gonna use uh, I think, dollars that are up to our discretionary use and, and, and and what we feel is the best way possible, so uh those, the, the way we do that is, is gonna have ripple effects. Um and, and I would want to have that conversation, uh it feels like we're, we're running out of time, right? Eventually, we, we're gonna have to make some decisions and and so I don't know uh if we have to have closed session uh to try to hash some of these things out. I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna start uh thinking a little bit more about ideas that I can share uh with, with the board about what I think, uh at least my thoughts on how to use some of that money. Um but, but we have to, we have to talk about it, uh otherwise, uh it, at least for me, it's gonna become, it's gonna be hard to to, you know, I, one of the things that I, that I that I kind of don't like is when we, you know, understanding that we do have the discretion to set the budget, you know, year to year. But the way we, but the way we make certain commitments even in this year, I think has impacts on, on the years after and so we, we have to have some conversation about what we're gonna do with some of the money, so I, I uh I, I say that kind of in general, um, don't, don't have all the answers myself. Uh but, but that's the reason why I think we need to make some time to, to have a conversation. And uh that, that's it for me though, but, but yeah, a lot of different a lot of different ways to do this and uh I'm trying to get a better sense of where the stress is gonna fall, right? Not just, not just in the first years, but in the the five years out, um where, where is it, where is it gonna shift? Um and, and so that's it for me, just uh sharing thoughts in general. Thank you.
And as a reminder, staff, David and I, Sarah, we're all available if there's any questions. In the meantime, um you know, think about something or as Director um Estrada mentioned, what, what are those future impacts? You just wanna talk through it. We're always available. Um email, phone, uh Teams meeting.
And Carla, just so I get a better sense of how much time we have as individuals to uh try to answer a lot of these questions and maybe in the process of setting more meetings and understanding things in more detail, I, you know, may, hopefully that resolves a lot of the questions. Uh how much time do you think we have to um try to get through this?
If we could do a budget study session towards the end of May, maybe the third week of May, that would be really beneficial to tighten up um some of the projections, so maybe three weeks for any questions in between now and then. Um again, we could adopt the budget on June tenth or on June twenty fourth, so we do have a little bit of flexibility there. Um I always get nervous when it gets to June twenty fourth, just in case something changes, so I like to have a, a one-meeting buffer. But about three weeks for questions in between now and a potential study session in May.
And uh an email to you to set up uh an appointment would be enough?
Yes. Email, phone call, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you. That was an excellent presentation and uh that's our one item of study for today, so we are adjourned.